Call this meeting the Harriman City Council to order September 4, 2018. Before we get started, we'll have a word of prayer by Councilman Wright, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Father, would you join me, please? Heavenly Father, we give thanks for another opportunity to gather together tonight to bring up the city's business. And Father, as we've come together tonight, we are also thankful for what we've been able to accomplish in our community and ask for your guidance and wisdom in carrying out our duties. And Father, help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable and respectful manner that you believe. Bless each person who took the time not to attend this meeting. Hail, Saint Mary.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call will please.
Darryl Cook.
Here.
Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Ken Mead.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Rat.
Here.
Our quorum. At this time, we'll have the appointment of Mayor Potem. This is an appointment by council. In case the mayor's out, this person will take care of the meeting. Your nomination.
I nominate, I believe we should go along with the tradition, nominating a high spoke hitter, and it's Ken Mead.
Nomination for Ken Mead. Need a motion. Second.
Can I say that?
Say it, Councilman Johnson. How can I ask?
But we continue to grace him with heaven's.
So, two mayors. Councilman Johnson.
The heaven will call him.
Floor is open for discussion. Before we vote, if you have a ruling, make sure that position. Call will, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Ken Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Rat.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 meeting. Can I make a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Say it by Councilman Mead, Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Mead.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call will, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Ken Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Rat.
Motion carries. Need a motion to pay salaries? Motion. Motion by Councilman Russell. Say it by Councilman Holly, Councilman Nelson.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call will, please.
Darryl Cook.
Yes.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Ken Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Rat.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll hear from delegations. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Can I be first, starting to go home?
You can.
I'm Brock Steven, and I talked to their parade yesterday, I mean, the parade for Harriman, and I asked them that I wanted to come to the city council meeting because I am post commander for American Legion Post 232 in Harriman. I'm the past East Tennessee Vice Commander and the past Vice Commander for East Tennessee. And we're celebrating 100 years next year at the American Legion Veterans Association of Organizations, and I wanted to see if we could have a parade veterans day of next year. It's too early to try to do one now, and I want to bring it to, because I don't think we've ever had a parade in Harriman for veterans. And I just wanted to know what everybody thought about that. We've got a whole year to think about. But also, I wanted to reach out to the community since I'm post commander now, because I've served four years as second district commander, one year as vice commander, so I've supported all of East Tennessee except my hometown, Harriman. So I want to reach out to the community and get more involved, get the community more involved, boy state, boy scouts, or choker, and homeless veterans. So that's just my proposal, and let me know what you think when I get back with you.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I think a parade honoring veterans is something that would be a great tradition to start from my standpoint.
Yes, sir. Council, have you been?
I agree with you. That'd be good. So we'll be getting in touch with you and getting the details worked out and looking forward to the next year.
I give this a card. Got my telephone number and a home number, but you can find me because I live in Harriman right on the highway. Thank you, I'm going because I gotta work tomorrow. I might be here a long time. Do you got something to say, sir?
Yes, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Steven.
Yes, sir. I'm Greg Buckles. I work for Brunt's. I'm part of American Legion as well. I'm the second vice. Want to say, like I said before you leave, we've started, we're implementing a mentorship program with American Legion as well, because we're all trying to do more in the community. Last year, I came before you all and tried to talk to you all about we're trying to start doing a high school dance. I still kind of sharpening that idea again, because the money we can generate from a high school dance will turn around, we'll put it in escrow, pretty much it'll be, and we'll give it back to the kids in form of scholarships we give out at the end of the year anyway. But I've since partnered up with, we've since partnered up with the kids at Rowan Academy, and they're having a luncheon on Thursday. If you all got any memo, they want to get some people to come out there. But they're trying to improve their image, and I'm working with them to try to help improve their image in the community. And one of the things that I'm going to start doing with the kids starting next Saturday is we're going to start bringing them to the American Legion on Saturday mornings from 10 to 2:00. And the reason why I'm starting with the kids from American Legion, from Rowan Academy, is because I have access to those kids there. And the young lady, Theresa McLean, has agreed to bring the kids to me, so we're going to start teaching the kids how to change a flat tire, how to tie a tire, just different things. As we get some women involved, then we can start teaching some young ladies some things. But with us being mainly a men organization, we have to start with what we have. And what we want to do is partner with the city as well. I've already talked to the managers at Lowe's, because I'm a vendor with Lowe's, so Lowe's is going to come onboard and help us out with any kind of supplies, things like that. But I want to do some things in the kids, with the kids on Saturday morning. We want to go and cut the grass for a senior or fix something around the house or do something. I want to teach the kids how to serve and how to serve other people. And so like I said, we'll just kick this off on Saturday, the 8th, and we're going to keep going all year long, pretty much as much as we can with activities with the kids. And just for an example, what I want to partner with you all with, I noticed, I'm new back in town about a year now, but Ms. Julie, a couple of seniors right there, the sidewalk right there by the house is old brick pavers and grass is growing between them. Both of those elderly ladies are walking on cans. So I want to be able to get the kids, we can get together with you all, because it's the city property. If we can either take those pavers up, if y'all can pour sidewalks, or if we want to put the pavers back down, it would be good to let the kids learn how to work with their hands to do something. We can do things like that with the city. And like I said, Lowe's will give us some paint, any other supplies, take the supplies with it, we can get some other vendors on wheels as well. But that's something that we're doing to try to better our image with working in the community and better the image with those kids down there and teaching them how to serve.
Now, he was talking about Ms. Julie, it's warm now, I'm pretty sure everybody knows her, since she raised a little argument. So I think I took up two buckets of your time, and I'll get ready to leave. Thank you.
Appreciate you all, appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam May with the Rowan Alliance. I've got some good news to let you guys know about. Last week, we got the numbers from the state about tourism expenditures, what tourists spend in our county, and it was nearly 70 million. It was 69.83, I think, exactly, and that was up more than 2 million from the previous year. We'd love to take all the credit for that, but we know Rebecca's done a great job, and she has brought in a lot of good events for Harriman, so we feel like that's part of that. Also, the Princess Theater has been named, will be part of the state's new music pathway trail. We just got the notice of that from the Commissioner Kevin Triplet, and Phase 1 will include the Princess Theater. They went ahead and chose the places that are already established to put on the trail, and then we'll have a Phase 2 where we'll kind of dig deeper into the county and find some more sites, interest stories, you know, about our musicians from the past and that sort of thing to go on the trail as well. So I just want to let you guys know about that. Author gala is coming up, and y'all know I always come and let you guys know about it. It is November 3rd. It'll be a Volkswagen again. We'd love to have you guys there, either sponsoring the table or being one of our bigger sponsors, and I brought invitations and information to hand out to you guys.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
David Will, David 161 MacNew Drive in Harriman. I want to address the special events coordinator position, and like I said earlier, I think it's a really important thing. We did it voluntarily for 10 years, myself and my family, no charge, and my brother did the fly and fill out there, no charge, large bulldozer, but that's about done. A lot of people go downtown, they thank the people to show up, but they don't. You have to really be important to get people down there. I appreciate you considering that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address council?
I was supportive of course, Doc Kite is president, and I have two things. First of all, I want to remind you all that all the council members are invited to our picnic, which is going to be Sunday afternoon, our communal picnic for our neighbors. And we're in a chair, we're in a dish to pass, we're going to have whole pork, and we'll have a little meeting before, just to informationally. And then secondly, maybe I should have brought this up at the workshop, but I have the budget, I just now got it, and I'm looking at it, and I was wondering if you could maybe inform me as to what contribution the city makes to pause that handles a lot of the animal issues, the animal rescue issues. I understand that if they are not, if a home is not found, or the owner is not found, that it becomes quite an expensive endeavor to take them down to animal control. So I was wondering, in the past, I don't know, I'm misinformed, if you could just tell me, is there a line item to support them in what they do, or do they come and ask you for contributions, or is it strictly supported by citizens like myself? And have you considered that since they provide such a great service for our county?
I've never been addressed about pause, about a donation, or making them back in the past. I have made, I remember something about Ms. Gibson coming once before and talking about it, I think before I came to be mayor. I know that we spend quite a bit of money at the animal shelter, a lot more than I'd like to spend that much, but as of right now, it's nothing, there's no line item for pause.
Might I ask that you consider that?
Thank you, ma'am.
What time was the picnic?
It's from 4:00 to 6:00.
Place, where's pause located? Do you know?
It's Cindy Simpson, or not Simpson, Cindy Pinkett, and it's at her home. Everything is budgeted and accounted out.
She's on, covering us.
Her home and her board, she has a board that works very, very closely with her, and I know I make contributions, and it's strictly by auction, things fundraisers to share out.
Thank you, ma'am. I have one other thing I meant to mention. The American Legion meets tonight, and I believe a little early, and we'll be deciding when to retire the large flag, and we'll always let the police department, fire department, and the city council know I'd like to have you somebody there. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address council? Yes, sir.
Yes, I said it would be a little, I think, I think if we ever put that under the direct department, that's part of the recreation, and that's admittedly, if that started out that position, I think we have a trail ahead which we haven't been doing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address council?
Sam Leford, I'm with the Rowan Alliance, and I'm here in support of the special events coordinator position. Without Rebecca, we couldn't do what we do at the Alliance for Tourism. Her mission aligns with our mission, her support aligns with what we support as a county, to grow the tourism initiative, Pam reported, she gave you the numbers on how that has increased just in the past year. We've got data to show you how her position has helped us increase what we are able to do as a county for tourism through these events, through these promotions that we get to do together. Her position is valuable, I think you need to consider that as a council tonight, what she really does for you and the value it has, not just for Harriman, but for the county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
As just being a resident of Harriman, I have seen what Rebecca has done, and everybody talks about the farmer's market, how much better it is. She's always there at every event, and I support her.
Thank you, ma'am. Miss ma'am.
I would like to echo the same thing about the events coordinator. Been volunteering for the city of Harriman for a very long time, and we like to stay involved, and we like the direction that the city is going, it's starting to become a destination. And if you've been volunteering for as long as I have, and also my family has been involved with the city of Harriman, you would notice the big difference, the huge difference that Rebecca makes. One of the first things, and what convinced me to help her extra to volunteer, that she did when she was appointed this position, and honor, to stand out in the middle of the street and collect money for her budget, which she had basically none of, and I'm sure she's improved it and the way things are handled, and she's added events that are successful and far-reaching. People are coming in from other places as a destination, and with all the things that Harriman has in the works, as far as events are concerned, she is the best person. I'm big time supporting her. Thank you.
Henry Redmond, as a small local farmer, I can tell you that Rebecca has done fantastic over there at the farmer's market. Now, I could go to Oak Ridge or Knoxville and make a lot more money with my produce than I do there, but I made a commitment to be at Harriman Farmer's Market, so this is my fourth year. And if she wouldn't have been there two years ago, I would have dropped out already and moved along. And I'll tell you, everybody's an example, and she is a positive example for this community to follow. And you can see Rockwood trying to emulate what she does, you can see Kingston trying to emulate Bush guys. They started three markets, and all of them are pretty much failing because they don't have the knowledge and experience as she has. Thank you.
I'd also like to commend Rebecca, commend her. I'm also a farmer's market. I've never missed one since the first winnow. We've had a better year this year than we've ever been in a farmer's market, and I have to give her a bit of credit.
Thanks, sir.
Kevin Ayers, I'd just like to say I support Rebecca, what she's done for our city, and it's nice to have a relationship with someone in the city, at the schools, that lets us know of special events and things that are going on, so I can get it to my students and get it to the parents, because you know how the kids are, they'll bug their moms and dads to death to get them to go to these special events. And I'm just glad that I have a relationship with Rebecca, and that she's able to get information about our city to me, and then down to our littlest citizens who are going to be our future here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Abby Rogers, I am a small boutique owner in Rowan County, and I've been a vendor under Rebecca for a couple of years now, I guess. And I've done events in middle Tennessee and all over east Tennessee, and none of them have been as, we actually dropped out of Secret City this year because it was so poorly run in comparison to our Rebecca does for it. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Courtney Riley, I work for the Chamber in Rowan County. I'd just like to say, in addition to what everyone else has already said about Rebecca and the services that she provides us, speaking on behalf of our business community and our Chamber members, our Chamber members actually awarded Rebecca with a Young Professional Award this year because they believe so much in what she does. So I think that, you know, shows a lot about her work ethic and what she does for our community.
Barry Tippel, 1822, certainly. When the position of city coordinator was originally, the concept behind it, before we ever created position, the discussion that was discussed here at council meetings was have someone down the trailhead, have our trailhead open to promote our little league, ball fields, our softball fields, and our golf courses. Somewhere, that's got off track from the original discussion now. I have no idea what Rebecca's been told she's supposed to do, or not, but that was the original concept when we created that position, when it was discussed in this council chamber four years ago, about three and a half members.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? We're going to move into the agenda. This time, we're going to listen to reports. HUB.
All right, the first thing I wanted to do is just commend you all for such a successful Hooray for Harriman Festival yesterday. The turnout was excellent. It helped us, HUB, because we were trying to improve public relations and outreach, and having a big turnout was, made our part of the event very successful, so I appreciate that. We opened bids for our new office remodel on August 23rd. Our lowest bidder was Stewart's Construction in Harriman, Tennessee. They're represented by Mr. Neil Crass. We're negotiating a few items, but we expect to award a contract to him very soon, any day now, actually. The work will begin on the outside of the building, which as you know, is going to be a great improvement. We want to get the exterior paint done before the weather turns cold. Our work at the Riverfront Park related to the lighting and security lights is completed. In addition, the lighting downtown is nearly completed. Our rideaway department is working a circuit in the Boswell Chapel area, in addition to keeping up with just different hotspots. And by now, you've all seen the bridge work in front of the Crystals down South Rowan Street, it's down the one lane down there. HUB will be involved in that somewhat. We've got gas and sewer lines in the way of the abutments that they're going to be expanding. At this point, we're hoping that T-Dot will help us a little bit, otherwise we'll have to come up with some funds for that project, because it was unexpected. Our CDBG waterline, water system improvement projects are continuing. A second phase should be beginning any day now on Howard and Parkly Avenues, and also down by Jerry Duncan Chevrolet. And lastly, we opened bids on a project this past month at our wastewater treatment plant for Clearfire Rehab, and that was awarded to Star Construction of Signal Mountain, Tennessee. That's all we have for HUB.
Anybody have anything for council? Thank you, ma'am. Fire department? Police department?
Yes, sir. You have the stats there in front of you, and I'm also sending them out a little bit earlier this time so you can see them. We're proud to say, I'm proud to say on behalf of all the officers here in the police department, that last month, they had more drug arrests than they've had in over four years. We finally reached the number of 17 total drug arrests. CPUs in full swing, we're working really hard on the drug issue. Also, you'll see your snapshot for August 2018. We have four pages, or seven, sorry, seven pages of information there, and you're going to see something new that we're adding, and I'm going to start this in the next stats, starting next month, is the total calls for service that we have. This is total dispatch calls for service. The snapshot that you get shows you the actual charges and events that they've handled, but what it doesn't show is all the calls for service that they go to. An example in July 2018 is we had a total of 879 calls for HPD for the entire month. That's compared to Kingston of 324, and Rockwood of 699. Sheriff's Department, which has much greater responsibility, is 1,776. So that kind of gives you an example of how busy HPD officers are, and we will be including that into this future stats for you. Okay? But I'm very proud of the officers that achieved that goal of 17 drug arrests. Thank you.
Sounds great. Anybody have anything to you?
Thanks for including that.
Yes, sir.
That way, everybody can see exactly everything that they're doing.
I just wanted to start by saying thank you to HUB, the police department, and the fire department for all their help at Hooray for Harriman yesterday. The event went off without a hitch. The police were there right on time to get the road closed, and the fire department got the engine out, and I really loved the additions that HUB made to the festival this year. Having that flag, I think really, it really made a big difference to the festival and the way the look of it was. It was really impressive. We ended up with 90 vendors signed up for Hooray for Harriman this year, which is significantly higher than we had last year. And we actually ended up profiting about $4,000 this year from Hooray for Harriman, just from money raised and I brought in for t-shirt sales as well. And I know that this festival is something near and dear to my heart. It is something that I've poured myself into for the past four, this is my fourth Hooray for Harriman I've had and held, and I know that I'm just trying to do the best that I can for the city and to really put something in there to make Harriman somewhere to be and somewhere to come to.
Thank you, ma'am. It was a great turnout. It was a really good festival. Did I ever thank anybody? Do we have any way to estimate?
My estimate is 5,000, but there's no way to get a real count. I do think we had more people there this year, even though it was 90 degrees. I know I got the report of someone that ended up staying four hours when they meant to come for 30 minutes, so I think that speaks to the success of the festival.
It was crowded.
It was.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Parks and Rec. Public parks, Mr. Langley?
Yes. Well, we've had the chainsaws out the last couple of weeks. We've cut trees on Georgia Street Alley, cut 50 Virginia Street Alley, cut out Virginia Crescent Street Alley, cut back Long Swannie and Burb Street Alley, cut up five trees on Bowls Road, big tree. Had a tree fall Thursday, last Thursday on Junior Street, landed on the fence, we got it off, didn't need to damage. Cut a tree on, one tree on Margate, two trees on Ridge Wood up on the mountain. Cleared and cut, cut back Westbury Heights Drive, going to the golf course, we cleared that whole road. Cleared right away, called and hauled on the four lane. So we had five, hey, junk picked up, we picked up, no dabbling, the industrial boardhouse, picked up tons of brush, picked up 25 tires under the new bridge. So we need to start watching people dumping up the new bridge, operate the chat. On animal control, he had 37 cows, had seven animals picked up, and he rode out three citations. Under the bridges, is there something we could block that off to keep people from dumping? Well, we got a cable there, we're going to have to put it back, somebody's going to cut it. I like to mow it one more time, put a lock on it.
Anybody have anything for this one?
How was it on your brush storage? You know, we're hanging on, we've been chipping a lot of that new chip, that new chip. It's a lot better, hope bad. We tried to chip on the can, three pile, put two or three on it. It's meant like an old. So looking at having to do something before, after? Well, I'm hoping, if any of this is crying, you go through the can, put it up again today. Jack, thanks, I appreciate you getting those tires picked up under the bridge, and hopefully we can get that cable secured here in the next few days. That'll take care of the dumping again. Take care of it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say something in support of the street department. Dracking that to the tour that we often do across the streets of Harriman. I'd just like to encourage people to mow the grass, let you know, flip it out on the doe, because the does enjoy.
Mayor, I'd like to say something in support of the Street Department. Drack, that's a tour that we often do across the streets of Harriman. I'd just like to encourage people to mow the grass, let you know, flip it out on the road. Because those enjoy it. It causes trouble. They have to come clear little frames. We saw quite a deal of that. I would do to help those guys, especially the leaves, things that sort of, we appreciate.
We're going to have to start an education program also, and let people know that if they hire somebody to come cut trees at their property, or if they're responsible for cleanup, we're not responsible. I think Mr. Langley's had to pick up quite a bit this month that people are going to log it out, but leave us the brush, and that's not the way it works. So we're working on getting something going with that, but just let people understand that's not what we do. If you pay somebody to log it, or they pay you to log it, they're going to take the brush rid. It's not our responsibility to clean up. So we'll be working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Just ma'am?
Sorry, I've forgotten a few things. As soon as I stood up, I realized I hadn't thanked the Street Department. And Drack was great. He made sure, rode around with me, made sure exactly where I needed cones to be. They were out ready for us on Friday, and his crew was there right at the end of the festival, street cleaning and making sure everything looked great. And also gave you all some handouts. Sorry I couldn't get you any sooner. We didn't know until yesterday. But you've got some info on the events over, since I've started really, including the most two current events, Hooray for Harriman and the Calder Festival. And then you've got stats on the workers that we had for Hooray for Harriman, and I had twenty-two volunteers that came in and worked. So that's somebody we didn't have to pay to come in and help make that festival really run as smoothly as it does.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can I make a suggestion on your previous comment? You mentioned about some educational, as far as get some information about the brush. I recently found out that the city has partnered with Roan State, with the TV station. So I was having, I had a meeting with the Director of the TV Station, whatever, and I had some ideas I threw at him. But just listening to you, I think we've got access to the school, the TV stations here. It can be utilized even more with the students there. They can make an informa, let them be part of a school project or something, where they can help make an infomercial, commercial, or whatever. And those kind of things, you need to get public service information out. They can air on the TV station, because we have access to it, and let them work and make those meetings. Sounds good. We're working with the TV station to do my work. All right, sounds good, because I talked to him, and he's going to try to do something with him and some other young people, whatever, to help utilize things more, so we can definitely try to do some things, get people, young people involved. Thank you.
Robert?
We just finished our yearly book sale. It went on for two weeks. We raised three hundred, hopefully, for every other. It's a little boy, three hundred. And our children program is all over, getting this way back. Our preschool program is on Wednesday from eleven to twelve. The homeschool program is on Thursday. We have two different age, younger H U Bs from eleven to twelve, older H U Bs from one to two. Then there is a show and share Mondays from eleven to twelve. And we are also still having our adult computer classes. We have one this Thursday. Anybody that would like to come, would like to learn more about computers, we have an air phone you to do so in classes outside.
Anybody have anything for Robert? Thank you. George Paul?
We actually have a copy of the stats and a snapshot of what was going on last month. If you'd like to take any questions, please.
Anybody have anything for this one?
The lady on Robert Street, she's already called me and said she appreciates you getting in touch with her, and they've already been over there working on that property.
I can say from Paul Starkhite's comments, he's going to go down.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for Miss Brown?
Thank you, sir. And I want to tell you all the Fire Department, Police Department, Coast Enforcement, the ones that, we have to get reports out, we look at, and we appreciate you sending those out. It does help a lot. Get them three or four days in advance, so we can look them over, so we can get any questions. Thank you.
See you, Treasure.
We did receive a letter from Tennessee Comptroller, addressed to Mayor Vess, that approved our note to finance the fire truck, and they found that our request was in compliance with our debt management policy. So a good check.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have anything for Drack? See you, Time.
Just an update. The city, we've had the ongoing annexation case of Gerald Argen, which is the Court of Appeals, had dismissed his appeal and remanded it to the trial court. It has come back on the docket for the delinquent, the underlying delinquent tax issue, and that's going to be heard before the transfer on Thursday. And then Attorney Mike Kelly has been historically handling that case, and so he'll be there Thursday for the city. And we'll know more after that.
Anybody have anything for City Time? Miss Brown, see you now.
Just wanted to make sure you knew that you do have a copy of the stats there for the Fire Department. Chief Davis had planned to be here, and he had a last-minute emergency, he was unable to attend, but normally he would be here to give you that report in person. Also, the question came up during the meeting last month with regard to the situation in the crates on Kindred Road that cover the catch bases. I have spoken with T-Dot with regard to that matter. They said that that has been added to the scope of work for repaving project that was supposed to be done on Kindred Road from Virgin Road and down to Highway Seventy, and that, at this point in time, they only know that it's scheduled to occur sometime during 2019. They don't have an exact date. Also, I wanted to let you know that some of the work that the new inmate crew from Morgan County has been doing. They have taken over the routine maintenance, mowing, yard maintenance at the Temperance Building and at the library, which frees up some time for the Public Works Department to be able to address other items that are in need. They also come out and help other departments as needed, scheduled one day a month, if golf course to assist them. They're available for Public Works special projects when needed. They also go out and help recreation with mowing projects such as that at times, particularly when we get behind into grain and equipment issues. They were also responsible for installing the new decorative cages that came in for the new streets on, the new lights on Roan Street. They're the ones that did the installation of those pieces. And they've also done some routine maintenance to some of our buildings since they've been working for us.
Anybody have anything for Chief, ma'am?
Thanks, sir.
One item under old business, first about the only item, discussing possibly pre-final reading on ordinance zero eight, one eight, dash, zero one. An ordinance in City in Harriman, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
May I speak to it?
Yes, sir.
We did make some changes to the second reading of the budget, and you have a little sheet there that explains those changes. We increased the revenue, City Court revenue, by five hundred dollars. And we had some updated numbers on our insurance and our liability, and we actually took better information and put it in the budget with respect to those items. We did add six thousand dollars to purchase body cameras for police. We added eight thousand dollars for policy software for the police. And the Fire Department, we added eight thousand dollars for policy software for them. We increased the city manager's raise percent from three percent to five percent. And we did revise distribution of staff time in Special Defense, Trailhead, and Main Street Program. So that, basically, the summary, the net change between first reading and the second reading is an increase of four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. And the, reading the budget, do you want to go over reading in language again? We actually read the language first reading.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Counselman Cook?
Sir, Counselman Pollard.
Counselman Cook.
I think we've got a very good budget to help our Fire Department, our Police Department out with some policy changes that needs to be made. I think everyone has looked over this in depth, and I think it's good for the city.
Counselman Pollard. Flora's open to discussion.
Okay, I have some. Let me get first. All right. I emailed Kevin earlier. I didn't get a chance to look at the latest changes that he emailed out on Wednesday as I was out of town. I got the kind of glance over his response because it was later today. Starting, I had a question on the City Court stuff. I mean, if we're going to make changes like, for example, on that one, I don't want to pass this budget and then let's say, okay, it happens whenever, tomorrow, six months from now, because I'm, not that there's a problem with doing that, but for the court system, we need to be prepared to take over what we're saying about moving somebody in the city office to take over that part-time job. I guess one of the things I'm getting at with that and with, I think we need to look at how the office, what everybody's responsibilities are for the office. Because I know one of the proposed changes I thought was happening was it would be, everybody's talking about a dance coordinator, was making that a part-time position, which, I'm not saying it can't be a part-time position, but if it's all falling under Kevin, then we need a little bit more detail from Kevin on exactly what his office staff actually does. It seems like we, we're talking about adding an administrative assistant to the city manager's role. I'm not really in favor of that right now. I might hear something else in discussions, it's like, yeah, but if we said, if we say yes on this budget, would it go, you know, go out tomorrow, be able to hire an assistant to the city manager? There's a lot of changes going on in there with passing the budget as is that I'd like to know a little bit more about and how it would actually happen. It seems like a lot of things are in path, we've said to do in the past, like we've not followed up on it, or maybe somebody's told Kevin not to do it at the time. I don't know. I'm sure it's a little bit of both. But if we're going to make a budget change like we're talking about making, then we need to do a little, be a little bit more, I guess, responsible in the actual events that take place and when they'll take place. I don't know any way to, I mean, I guess the end of it is just a yes or a no vote to me, but. Another one on there, policy software. Sixteen thousand between the police and fire on policy software. Is this what type of policy software it is? I mean, patent that it, we're going to go into, is it a software form to use? Is that what?
I can speak to that, Counselman.
What'd you put?
Yes, sir. What we're looking at is a product called Lexipole, and this is something that the Roan County Sheriff's Department and Kingston Police Department are prepared to use it. We have found that several other agencies are using this. This is something that Counselman Cook brought to my attention. I gave it a full review last week, and we were not aware of what this would do prior to this. I'd heard the product, but what we found out, first of all, our, I can't say Fire Department, but for the Police Department, our current policies and procedures are dated from back in the nineteen eighties. So we're over thirty years overdue on policies and procedures. Now, in the last couple of years, I've been working intensely on an accredited policy system. I'm all the way through Chapter Nine now, Chapter Nine of about twenty-four chapters. The issue is, I got to Chapter Nine, and these accredited policies are based off the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police standards, and they went in and changed some of the other chapters that I've already created, and I'm having to go back and create those again. I spoke with the Chief of Police, Don White, over in the North City PD, on how they got their policies accredited, and they actually had to hire a full-time person for one year to do nothing but accredited policies. Well, what Lexipole provides for us is updated policies. Now, they're not accredited, but it does give you a base to start out with as far as updated, up-to-date, sound policies that aren't thirty years old. And so by us buying into the system, we're instantly going to be adopting all these new policies that are approved by T A C P, Tennessee Association Chiefs of Police, and International Association Chiefs of Police. It's basically going to be a turn, key policy procedure system that we can also, that we can then build off of if we want to add or take away, or make our policies more stringent. So basically, for the sum of, the agreement was, it's ten thousand a year for the program. What they've done is they said, well, go ahead and sign a two-year agreement, they'll let us have it for eight thousand this first year, ten thousand next year. I know that sounds like a lot of money, but for what you're getting from it, updated policies and continually updates. If there's a new federal change or state change, those get pushed out to immediately. And as far as our liability goes, I can't recommend it enough, because when you get into these, you know, different situations, dealing with, you know, old policies, you can end up on the wrong side of the lawsuit. So I strongly recommend, based off of what I see, I'm very impressed with the program. It is something I recommend, that's the way to do it.
So we're at, are you cutting anything out of your budget that day?
No, sir, not this time. If we had to, if I have to sacrifice something, I would, the only thing I would ask to sacrifice would be the car. We can hold off if we have to this year. I did do an evaluation of the cars. Right now, I think we're putting about a hundred and ninety-five thousand total miles a year. We're averaging about a hundred and twenty miles per officer per shift, which is natural. I mean, they got to get out there and patrol. Otherwise, the only alternative to that would be telling them, hey, don't patrol around, just sit somewhere for two hours. Well, who am I here to patrol the streets? Well, if you're putting a hundred and ninety-five thousand miles every year on the cars at hand, you've got to replace those hundred and ninety-five thousand miles with something. And so in order to completely replace, maintain the fleet that we have now, we have to buy two cars a year. So we could do without a car this year, but if we do, then I would be requesting at least two cars next year in the budget. But if we have to cut something out, we can.
I know at first budget reading, I'd ask you something about looking into a used car or?
Yes, sir.
Program car, whatever you want to call it, or put an investigator into a normal car.
Yeah, I'm talking about patrol cars only. I'm not even counting the investigator side. That's just the patrol side.
Investigators not driving either?
They do. I have factored that into the total mileage. I'm just talking about patrol mileage. We're doing a hundred and ninety-five thousand patrol miles, not counting the detective miles on detective vehicles. That'd be a whole separate. Now, that, we could supplement with used cars, but I'm talking about actual patrol miles by patrol officers in part units.
I asked a question, you said it's eight thousand this year, ten thousand next year?
Yeah, there would be ten thousand a year after that.
Same with the Fire Department?
The Fire Department, we aren't quite sure about, this particular company does not do fire policies, and so they're researching different options that can provide that service.
Is it a circuit? What made us decide we needed this circuit that we have now? Especially for fire, obviously.
I guess, let me say, with regard to what you have on this summary sheet here, which is what came out last Wednesday, which you referenced, with the exception of the insurance changes, which is just based upon the actual invoices that we received, everything else on this list, at the end of our workshop, the mayor asked each council member to give a day, if they, how do you think they're going to change within the budget? So this is a compilation of that list that came through various states.
So is this stuff, from what Charles said, this is changes to the budget right now? As I'm looking at it, but?
They are in the copy that you received tonight. They were not in the copy that you had on first reading. Uh, they were not in the copy that you had on first reading.
I mean, a lot of that stuff like that should probably be, again, uh, maybe it's just me and you all feel that way, but workshop item does something that one of us thinks might ought to go in a budget, but it was not, not there. Again, my opinion, it's our guess and no opinion, but, um, we're putting it in here for the fire, but they don't have it, that might have been out there too. So that just leaves eight thousand out there for the, but, I mean, the only reason I'm bringing all this up, and it seems like it happens every year, is when everybody needs their equipment, police and fire and safety, so do the street and parks and rec, and it's like pulling teeth to get a mower, an eight-thousand-dollar mower that they have to have to make it look like what everybody said when they come into town for an event. So, I mean, so I think we need to question these six and eight-thousand-dollar purchases just like we do when it comes down to, uh, needing a new mower for the golf course. We wanna keep the golf course, so yet, we gotta go out and buy a mower. So, if I were to call and say, if to call your meeting with you and say, hey, I think ten thousand needs to be added for changing our water harness apart, would we just put it in here? Everybody else vote yes or no on the whole vote?
Well, that's why we sent out the individual list, uh, was so that you could see what had been changed. Uh, just because it's in the numbers doesn't mean that it has to be done or that it can change.
I understand, but if we vote on it, like, it's written here, is anything will be changed. I mean, there's no assurances and nothing that you have to get approved after that point. This is something that requires an approval to buy. One of my questions is kinda what mayor brought up. I mean, why do we not, as a council, we're going to follow up through somebody. I mean, we went to, a lot of us can follow back on Kevin. I mean, we went to the city manager for the government. So we, we hired Charles, we hired Kevin, and other than that, Allison and the judge. So everybody else that's known us is what I'm getting. So we need to have an office staff budget, and Kevin works out of it and determines if any city clerk and one other person, or city clerk and five people, put one on the trailway here to run an event. I think before we can start changing all that stuff, we ought to have some type of, uh, a meeting to determine how we staff everything. I don't agree with the part-time, uh, minimum wage worker at the trailway. I mean, we need somebody else out there that we need. We won't approve track, another eight-dollar-an-hour person until we say it's tied into the state budget, or state money that we get to resume the area ourselves.
I, I got a question on this, uh...
Not on the eye, that's...
I, I understand what, uh, what Councilman Lee is, is asking on the, uh, if we approve this, does, it, it literally goes into effect right after we approve it? So it goes into effect tonight? There's no dates settling and stuff as to when anybody goes anywhere, what goes on, it happens as soon as you vote, uh, which means whatever you vote on goes into effect right now. You don't get to go back tomorrow and say, well, wait a minute, we voted on it tonight. Now, on the, uh, the software, uh, eight thousand this year, ten thousand next year, is this a, I guess what I'm looking at is personnel policies, if I pay somebody eight thousand dollars for driving, it's the personnel policies. Is this gonna cost me ten thousand dollars next year just for maybe one change?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, it would be...
Will we sign a contract?
Uh, yes, sir. It'd be a contract for first, first year, for this year and for next year. It'd be for eight thousand this year, ten thousand, and then after that, it'd be renewable year by year. And then, usually, there's more than one policy change made in a year, uh, but they would automatically send those to us, we look at them, we approve them, they send, they go out to the officers, instantaneously, the officers can look at that, uh, and be notified of the, of the policy change. We have proof that the policy has changed, and you would also have snapshots to where you could go back and say, uh, let's say, five years from now, uh, they say, well, we wanna go back to this date, see what the policy was during that period of time. You, you have that stuff instantly done for you. So it would, it would be an overall increase of ten thousand a year, uh, if, if it, yeah, year by year by year, it'd be ten thousand.
Is it something that we're gonna get booked it on, that is gonna be in city records? Is it just something we're gonna have to go, and it's, it's only on the computer, we can only look at it on their website? Are we getting a hard copy?
It's both. You, you can print off a hard copy and have a hard copy in hand, as well as it could be online as well, yes, sir.
So, once they get this done, the city council will, at that time, approve the personnel policy that they've set forward.
Correct, yes, sir. Now, they would prove it as it, as it stands, and then next year, it would be, it'd be a two-year deal if the city council wanted to drop it at that point. Um, of course, we'd be in it to eighteen thousand dollars for two years. We can still, those policies can still remain ours. We can have those policies however. We would not get the policy updates and be able to send out the instant notifications and do all the other things that the website does. Of course, that would give us a good two-year period to evaluate the program and see if we need to continue to do that.
And, and I say it more on the, the police than I do the fire, please, man. Policies just don't change that much in fire, I mean, not, not like the police.
Did we not, was our former chief not working on that? Did he not pass it on to you? Is that where your chapter nine comes in?
Yes, sir, that's where my chapter nine comes in, yes, sir.
I thought he passed it, of course, also.
Not police policies.
Not personnel policy?
This, this doesn't even do the personnel policy, it's standard operating procedures for police.
When Randy was there, well, he did send it on, and passed it.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that. I own and test in the city personnel policy manual. Uh, they took that out, uh, and it does address some issues, but the overall, like, pursuit policy, things of that nature are not addressed in the city policy.
Well, I thought that was, was kinda like a two-part. Old chief was working on that, the transition, if we use a thing, we're asking or anything like that other part.
I'm not at all aware of that, sir.
Again, where I'm getting, we need to follow up a little bit more on our, uh, task here. It's, it's much harder than I was thinking, I guess.
I don't think, I'm not aware who has to do these type of changes.
Randy was working on something, uh, calling those lines or something, I mean, we, we held officers to something, though, through the last, uh, button he took.
That would be the orig, the original policy manual that we had, that was established.
And the only thing you're in jeopardy for is if you have a lawsuit filed against you from something that then should've been updated that wasn't updated.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That you can go out there tonight and they can safely operate under that policy and serve the citizens.
As, as it's written, that's what they are operating on, but, but it's impossible to update them from time to time. Some, some of the old policies have stuff in there that are kinda dated, uh, which I can go into detail with you, you know, if you, if I had a policy in the front of me, but it's, it's just outdated stuff.
Could I say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, budget numbers are basically budget authority. It's, uh, spending is, first of all, contingent on receiving the revenues that we have forecasted, and should those revenues not meet expectations, that budget authority is not guaranteed to be spent. Uh, second item is, an item like this, you still have the approval right and a final analysis to approve the actual expenditure for the software. So it is budget authority. It is not opening your gate and say, you can spend it all now. It, it all comes down to how much revenue we have and that we're bringing in, and you still have the right to not spend that money on a particular line item.
So, so the way that we are, with this is being, the motion and the second is to approve this budget as it, as it says, with the changes in it, uh, which is, uh, two part-time employees, administrative assistant, and a position coming out of that. And the additional body, uh, it's on this too.
That's what the present motion is, is correct. Once this motion has been decided, I mean, if it goes on past, then you consider other alternatives.
Any other discussion from council? It's been a motion and a second to approve the ordinance number zero eight one eight dash zero one. More further discussion, call it up, please.
Chair Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yeah.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
No.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
No.
Motion carries and vote for it, too. At this time, we hear from council. Counselman Cook?
Uh, great to be here at first meeting. Uh, I appreciate the support I've received, uh, across the city during the election. Uh, look forward to working with these guys and hopefully moving the city of Harriman forward. Thank you.
Counselman Johnson?
We need to do a little bit better down at the Riverfront, uh, down there for the Harriman reunion. The other day, the top of the benches and stuff, the picnic tables were just like real nice. I got pictures of it every day, but we just need to clean up a little bit more before events down there. That's all I've got.
Counselman, yes?
Nothing at this time.
Counselman Wright?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, uh, chief, but...
Yes, sir.
Snapshots and, and copies right there.
Yes, sir.
The information in there, is there any reason that that couldn't be posted later for general public?
It can be, yes, sir. Yeah, we can, we can actually post it right on our Facebook page and put it out to public if you'd like.
Well, I think the public would maybe appreciate that.
Okay, we'll do it. Yes, sir.
Unless my name is enough to get it sent.
Yes, sir.
Counselman Howard?
Went down to the Pickle Mill site today and, uh, coming around home, did a honor of reading to the, uh, for launching it. Looks like we didn't finish it up. Didn't drink much, but...
Thanks, sir. Counselman. Uh, the cameras, are they complete in the park?
Yes, sir. They, the internet has been installed, the cameras are in, the DVRs are working, uh, the only thing left is the networking setup, uh, configuration. Uh, we should have that, uh, hopefully by the end of this week, and have some user name and passwords to log in, to look at the cameras, and, uh, also have some, uh, public Wi-Fi available.
The other thing, as Counselman Howard said, uh, the Pickle Mill site is coming close to an end. Uh, some of the, uh, the workers down there will start, uh, vacating till the end of this week, from what I was told today with Mr. Gallion. Uh, we are going down, I'd like to have the council come down, uh, we're going down Thursday, uh, around ten, ten fifteen, uh, to do a little presentation for them and, and, uh, so I'd like to have council come down and be a part of that. Uh, it's on behalf of the city of Harriman.
This is Thursday?
This is Thursday, yes. And then there's launching this Thursday at the Rome Academy, and I think the council has been ready to, so don't forget it. Picnic Sunday, don't forget it. And that's all I have.
Any other time for the Pickle Mill?
The Pickle Mill for twenty ten, twenty fifteen. We're going to new business. First item, discuss and possibly, first reading, ordinance zero nine one eight dash zero one, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to establish reasonable court costs and lead in a local litigation task. Kevin, you got the books?
I've got a copy of that ordinance in your packet. Um, it allows you to establish, uh, court costs at a different level than the eighty-five dollars at which they're currently set. Um, all you've got to do is decide, uh, what amount you'd like to charge for the court costs.
Counselman Cook, you checked into what the county was getting on this?
Yes, uh, checked in, uh, the courthouse, and the current there is two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars is what the court current is at, at the Rome County courthouse for general sessions in relations to a speeding ticket or a, an offense of that nature, like we would see at city court.
So the county's is two-fifty-two versus eighty-five. Uh, I, I would ask council to be, uh, careful about jumping that way up real quick. Uh, I think maybe the one-fifty mark would be a good starting point, uh, making, you know, we're not out to make money in, in court, you know, we're lucky we don't have to write anything, just, but we, we know we do, and, uh, just don't wanna jump out there too far. Did an amount, did a motion. Make a motion?
I'll take it.
What amount?
One-fifty.
Motion, Counselman Johnson, uh, for court funds to be one-fifty, court funds to go to one-fifty, I second by Counselman Cook, Counselman Johnson.
I don't have nothing.
Counselman Cook?
I believe that brings us in line where we've, uh, looks like been losing money through our court system. Hopefully that'll at least make a break in there. Thank you.
Doors open for discussion. Howard, please.
Chair Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. The last thing on the agenda is appointing of, of boards and committees. Uh, not all the committees and boards are down there. A couple of them I am not ready to, uh, to recommend to council. Uh, I'm gonna take the first two off, it is online, until the next meeting. Uh, the beer board, uh, I'd like to put Counselman Tim Johnson and Bill Alexander on the book there.
Motion.
Motion, Counselman Russell. Second, Counselman Cook, Counselman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Counselman Cook. Doors open for discussion.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next is the finance committee. I'd like to put, put Councilman on, I'd like to put Gerald Cook on the finance committee.
No.
Motion, Councilman Wright?
Take it.
Second, the Councilman Johnson, Councilman Wright?
No.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Boys open for discussion. Howard, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next line we have there is the golf advisory committee. I'd like to put Jeremy Gibson and Samuel Bader.
Motion.
Motion by, Councilman Russell?
Take it.
Second. Councilman Cook?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Russell?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook?
Good selection.
Boys open for discussion.
I will get all these updated on the website so people will...
Tom, please.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. I have two more committees. I'd like to, on the board of zoning and fields, put Pat LeVoy. And that's, both, Councilman Wright?
Take it.
Second, the Councilman Howard, or, Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Howard?
That was it. That's it.
That's just me. I'll go. Howard, please.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Bonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Are we gonna look at those other two?
Yes.
The last appointment I have tonight is the temperance building committee, and I would like for the council to put Bill Joe Daniels and Donna Daniels.
Both?
Take it.
Councilman Russell, second, the Councilman Cook, Councilman Russell.
Good selection.
Councilman Cook?
I agree a hundred percent.
Boys open for discussion. This passes, guys. You know your workload just got heavy, right? Howard, please.
Gerald Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. The other two, two of the committees that we have looked at and have talked about at workshops, and we continue to talk about, is the fire and police committees, which I think they would be firing police commissioners. These committees would have no power, just like the other committees we have, there's been recognition committees that we recommend. What I would like to do is, it's always about committees, former committees. I'd like to form a committee to come up with a bylaws and things, of what those committees would have to do, what their responsibility is. Right now, we have nothing in place, so we can't put a committee together until we put those bylaws and stuff in place in council approved zones. Councilman Wright had told me he'd like to have a committee. I'd like to have three councilmen and the city manager. Need two more councilmen?
I volunteer. If, I may have to make sure I introduce my committee with my law professional experience.
Okay. You all, let's see. Councilman Russell, Councilman Cook? Okay. Uh, Councilman Cook, the Councilman Russell, Councilman Wright, Councilman Wright, you work, you're with the Councilman Johnson. I'm not appointing that committee as a panel committee. You all just get with the city manager and start working up the bylaws and stuff and what the commissions, and then the council comes through and they're all good as to what they're gonna do. The last thing I got, I'm gonna hush and get out of here because it is hot in here. I have told you all back, and I've let the ball drop, about probably when I first became mayor two years ago, I felt like that people that own property in the city should have the right to vote in the city. It's a taxation without representation, in my opinion, in my opinion, on it. But I think that this council needs to take that into consideration. If people own a own property here, when I say property, I don't mean just a business. I'm talking property. I have got the city of Kingston's, I've looked at it the way they do it, and I think that we have a lot of people that own property here that don't have a voice. And I know we have a lot of renters here that we may not want to have a voice, but we have a lot of good citizens that do own property, and I think that they deserve the right to vote, whether we sit here or not, whether it gets me beat or not, or what it does, but I think they should have the right to have an input on what goes on here if they're paying taxes inside this city. So I'd like to put that on the agenda for next month, and I will be getting you all some paperwork out showing you what other cities do. You can discuss it, prove it if you choose. I'll prove it, but I think that those people have the right to vote inside our city. My opinion. Anything else need to come before this, council? Motion, Jeremy.
I'll take it.
Second, I'm with everybody.